Okay, I've got 6:29. Why is it making me re-download this packet? I am just going to strangle my gosh. It doesn't work. Oh, no, I do it in...
That's great, though.
In my packet, but I can sign it while I'm here. Agenda. And at 6:32, so. All good down there? Ready to go? Okay, I'm going to call to order. Oops, somebody needs to mute. All right, we'll try again. Nope, still got a bad echo. There we go. Okay, all right, so I'm going to go ahead and call to order the city council meeting for Tuesday, April 19th, 2022. Madam City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Christie Mauchow.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kaylee Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Moran.
Present.
Councilmember Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Lam. Councilmember Kenton Trine.
I didn't hear him, but I can see him, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, we do have a quorum. Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Lam, would you lead us in the pledge? Councilmember Lam. Are you going to lead us in the pledge? Thanks. I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 6-0, the agenda is approved. Next, we have an executive session. This is for potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.1I. I would estimate, let's say, 20 minutes. So we'll be back here at 6:52.
The city council has extended the executive session until 7:02 PM.
Okay, we've got an echo. Hang on, that's my fault. There we go. Okay. All right, so we are back from executive session. I don't see everyone up. Okay, we're still waiting for a couple of council members here. Uh-oh, okay. Are you connected or no?
Yeah, it's like mostly on.
Okay, Karen, are you on? Karen Moran.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Okay, we do have all of our council members back. Councilmember Lam's here in council chambers and is just having a technical difficulty, but she is sitting up here at the dais, so. Okay. Next, we have public comment pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-28. The city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual city council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and the public... And public comment is able to be submitted. Written public comment may be accepted up until 5:00 PM the day of the meeting. Submit your written comments by email to thecityclerk@smamish.us and thecitycouncil@smamish.us. Please join the Zoom meeting if you'd like to give verbal public comment this evening. Information on how to join is listed under the meeting accessibility at the top of this agenda. Up to three minutes of verbal public comment may be provided per person live during the meeting. During public comment, the city clerk will ask attendees to press the raise hand button if they wish to give comment. If joining the meeting by phone, dial *9 to raise your hand. When it's your turn to speak, the clerk will unmute you and you will be given the ability to turn on your web camera if you desire. You will be notified when you have 15 seconds remaining to wrap up your comments, after which you will be muted at the end of the three-minute period. Madam City Clerk, do we have anyone wishing to give public comment this evening?
If you wish to provide public comment, please raise your hand.
There's a lot of feedback. I don't know if people need to mute or not.
I see we have three people who have raised their hands to provide comment. I will now promote the first caller. Mary Victor.
Hi, my name's Mary Victor, and I've lived in Smamish over 20 years. So I wanted to talk a little bit on the stormwater rate study that the city has on the agenda tonight as item 14. The stormwater rate study is super important because there's something called the SW... Or excuse me, SMW, or swim fee, it's called. And it's something that is paid with the taxes in County collect. Actually, a fee that gets returned to the city. And behind me, you can see, it started originally with King County in 1992 at about $82. When the city incorporated at the end of August in 1999, it was $86. And then you can see it went up. And then you can see it stayed flat at $150 for about eight years where the city really didn't change it. And then they put a little, like, 2.7% increase per year. And then in 2016, 17, they did the first thing, and the rates went up by like 19% for a couple of years. And then I think the last two years, it's been about 2%. And so currently for 2022, in the city of Smamish, a home, a single-family home pays $396 for surface water management fees. And like I said, that gets paid with your taxes to King County, and then they take a small service fee, and then that comes back to the city. So they're very important. In the prior years, in about 2015, 2016, the total amount collected by the city for just stormwater management, you can only use the fees for stormwater management, and those type things, not for other projects. It was about $3 or $4 million that was collected every year, and now it's over $8 million per year. And it's not so much that the number of houses have gone up, but it's just the fee has been increased by that much. And it's important to be able to do that. So in 2016, we went to the... From the 1998 and the 2009 King County Surface Water Design manuals, the city was required to update, and they had to go to the 2016. Currently, we're only going to the 2021 version. That's at the planning commission and is going through public comment. But it's really important because this is the funds that go to pay for things like capital improvement projects, or to clean ditches, or to mow ponds, or to do necessary things to prevent flooding and those type of things. So anyway, it's really important. I just wanted to give some background as you go tonight. The other part that gets looked at, the rate study, is the system development charges. Every time a new house is built, there's a fee for it. It used to be about $450 in the beginning. Now I think it's over $2,2500. I didn't look that one up. But it's based on like 2,500 square feet, and then there's add-ons as you go larger. So that regular surface water management fee, the swim fee, is the same for every single-family house, whether you have a tiny little house, whether you have a giant one. I believe schools are exempted, but I don't know about that currently. And then commercial businesses are billed. And then the system development charges are what the city gets whenever somebody builds. So thank you, and I look forward to the staff presentation tonight because the stormwater people are excellent in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Victor.
I will now promote the second caller. Mr. Stickney.
Hello, City Council. That's a cool graphic that your last speaker, Mary Victor, has learned how to put up behind her. My comment tonight is a follow-up to my last week's comment about the three-Q IQ, where I talked about making three assumptions about growth, answering fundamental questions, getting into relationships with this person, and then asking those questions again. Tonight, I have a second follow-up, another four-letter. E-I-N-I-E. Because in Smamish, for those that have opinions on growth, most people's opinions are rooted much more heavily in EI than IE. EI is emotions and ideology. Growth is extremely emotional in Smamish. There are very strong ideologies. What's been missing from most of these positions is the second IE, information and a whole other set of emotions that it's impossible to tap into until you have the information, understand the needs, understand consequences, and sustainability, and how these decisions affect every aspect of the community. Our path forward is what I read last week. The most important thing for Smamish to do is to determine which growth directions our community decides to sustainably embark on that provide the most net positive growth. A couple other comments about this. Spring is a time of renewal, if you will, and rebirth happens every year. I think our city needs to renew and consider our direction based on information and emotions we haven't tapped into. Try and get past, not completely, but try and get past real divides over growth that are rooted far more in emotions and ideology and less in information and informed emotions. This is the path forward. I plan to spend some time chatting the next couple of weeks about some key words, but I just want to lead with a lead-in to next week. For a lot more public discussion, obtain lacking information we've never had to inform direction on growth. Reduce traffic congestion, which, by the way, is at school.
15 seconds.
Not on lame-capacity road projects. Alleviate housing misdevelopment in our community. Enable holistic enrichments across the board. And two inspiring visions for 95% suburban, 5% urban, both Smamish-style. Exciting. I will talk to you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stickney.
I will now promote the third caller. Jan Byrd.
Okay, there we go. Let me ask, this is Jan Byrd from Smamish. And although I'm speaking on behalf of myself tonight, I'm a member of both the Smamish stewards and the Smamish Botanical Garden Society. And I know tonight you're going to be talking about hopes and dreams related to Big Rock Park South. And I'd like to request you consider construction, not only of the raised beds like we have at the current steward nursery at Beeter Lake Park, but a city greenhouse to be shared by both the stewards, the Smamish Botanical Garden Society, and the city. Now, when our current nursery was built for the stewards in the late 2018 and opened up for us to use in 2019, it was considered temporary location with a permanent one to be built at Big Rock South whenever that became available. And the current one has been just a great asset, not only for the stewards, but also for the city. When we salvage plants, property to be developed, we've been able to hold them there. We've been able to buy plants from King Conservation District, bare root, and then we pop them up and we have a place to store them. And we've either... Individual stewards have either donated, and also community members have donated plants, with propagated plants at home as well, and it gives us a place to keep them. And like when the new stewards needed plants for Evans Creek and East Smamish Park, before the city bought any more plants, they first came to the nursery to find out what was already there and were able to, you know, use some of the plants there and not, you know, purchase as many plants from a nursery because we had them already. It's been really helpful for the city because for Big Rock Central, for many months, the plants were kept at the nursery. Prior to that, the city had their plants scattered among all the different bins in the maintenance yard, and so it was really hard for them to get watered in a really, you know, well taken care of. But you folks bought, the city bought items for an irrigation system. Our volunteer of the year, Steve Marple, created an irrigation system, and so the city plants were able to be in there, as well as plants for the different steward sites. So it kept them in good shape until they were ready to be used. So why do we need to add a greenhouse to the nursery? Well, it protects delicate plants and critters and weather extremes. I had a whole bunch of plants I grew from seed I took over there, I potted them up, and the slugs just decimated them. So a greenhouse would have prevented that sort of thing. It allows for growing a more diverse selection of plants. It provides a protected work area when the weather's bad. It means having seedlings available earlier in the season. And we could raise inexpensive bare-root trees to be used in the urban forest management plan if we had, you know, a place for them. Especially when they're small, they can be at risk of deer and whatever.
15 seconds.
Going after them. So we reduce the cost of plants to the city, for the stewards, and the Botanical Garden Society, and just everybody. And also, it could be a great educational facility for gardeners of all ages and abilities. If we make it barrier-free, it'd be great for people that are disabled, older people like me that are having a harder time getting down on the ground. It would make, you know, a really nice amenity to the city. So I hope you'll consider that when you look at the different park amenities. Thank you.
Hey, Jan, I have a quick question. Have you... This idea of a greenhouse has been around for a while. Have you put much thought, or has any of the groups put much thought into it? How big are we talking about that you think might be necessary? Because I know that there was even a thought that, like, as homes were getting developed or as there was re-landscaping, that we'd even take plants that were going to get demolished as houses went up, for example, and store them as well. But I'm just curious if you had any thought as to... If the team said any thought as to how large a greenhouse?
Actually, Steve Marple had some thoughts on that. And he thought that there was... In fact, I think the Smamish Botanical Garden Society is going to make a comment, but he thought there was one that was about a $35,000 greenhouse that he thought, you know, would be feasible. Now, if you had a concrete floor, you have to do the table, so it does start to add up. But he thought certainly for, you know, $100,000, you could get something, maybe no less than that. He's a very practical guy, so I think if the city were to work with him, he always comes up with, you know, ways to do things on the cheap, but, you know, get the job done. Anybody who gardens in Smamish knows Steve. He has lots of good gardening advice.
Thank you. Yeah, I even know him, and I don't garden.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Byrd.
I will now promote the third caller. Please start your comment by stating your name and the city you live in for the record.
Start video. Can you see me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Janelle Deutsch, and I am the president of the Smamish Botanical Garden Society. And I hope you all have had a chance to go through the Heritage Garden, to see all the beautiful blooms of the tulips and other flowers and plants that we have there. I am new to this, so if you don't mind, I'm going to just read so I don't forget anything. So thank you for the opportunity, for letting the SBGS, we just say that, so we don't have to say Smamish Botanical Garden Society. In regards to the future plans of Big Rock Park South, the SBGS, a nonprofit 501(c)(3), came into existence in 2018. In 2020, the SBGS partnered with the city with a goal of creating a heritage garden located in Big Rock Central. In 2021, this goal was realized with the city's support, and we greatly appreciate the city's support and the ease of working with the city. The SBGS designed the Heritage Garden. The SBGS propagated, purchased, and installed plants, and maintains currently the garden for the community of Smamish. The Heritage Garden focuses on heirloom plants that the settlers might have grown and puts a rearred house into context. This garden has been a great success. The SBGS, and maybe the city too, has received numerous positive comments about the Heritage Garden and the educational workshops, demonstrations, and tours that the SBGS has offered to the public. The SBGS has continually maintained the Heritage Garden and has provided fresh produce for the Isakua Food and Clothing Bank. Last year, we donated over 500 pounds of food. Planning is now commencing for the future development of Big Rock Park South and Beaton Hill Park. It has always been the SBGS's hopes and dreams to create a botanical garden in the city of Smamish. Big Rock Park South would be the perfect place to realize suspicion, building on and utilizing existing facilities, mainly distinguished gardens and residence that could serve as a visitor center.
15 seconds.
Oh, okay. 15 seconds. Well, we would like to also say that we would love to have a greenhouse. We are a partner with the Smamish stewards and would love to be able to propagate and salvage more plants for this botanical garden. And we hope that the city will share in our vision of having a botanical garden in Big Rock Park South. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
That's all for public comment for tonight. I will turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you. Council, next, we have an executive session. This is potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101I as well. Madam City Attorney, I'm not sure on the timeframe on this one.
I would say approximate duration of 15 minutes and no action is expected afterwards.
Okay, very good.
The council has extended the executive session until 7:50 PM.
I think we're just waiting for everybody to get their cameras back on here. Just a second. I got it. I got it. I got it. All right, we don't quite have everyone up here yet. It's a lot easier when we just walk out and not have to worry about the technology up here. Are you connected?
No, I'm fine.
Karen, are you having issues at your end, too?
Yep.
Okay, just want to make sure everyone's on first. Sorry for the public who's watching us struggle here. We're almost there. All good, Karen? Okay. All right. So there was a misspeak. There is... Oh, there is action, so... And we've got an echo, so somebody's got a mic on.
I'd like to make a motion. I move to authorize...
I think... Amy, I'm sorry. I'm just, I'm trying to get rid of the echo. Karen, if you can... Is it you? Nope, no, it says you're connecting to...
Are we all good?
Okay, we just have an echo. I just want to make sure it was audible. Okay, go ahead.
I move to authorize outside legal counsel to request that investigator Kathy Weber prepare and issue a final written report to the city council regarding her investigation related to former city manager Dave Rudat, subject to legal review for potential internal redactions consistent with Public Records Act exemptions before producing to the public.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Lam, did you want to speak to your motion?
I do not.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak? If you could use that raise hand feature. Councilmember Trine.
Yeah, at the advice of legal counsel, which was to not release this report, I would not be voting for this measure or this motion. Seems to me like it's a no-brainer for us to just follow the city's legal counsel's advice on the matter. I don't have a law degree. I don't think anyone else sitting on this council has a law degree that can address the specific issue. And so I would not be in agreement with the motion and will be voting against it. Thank you.
Councilmember Lam.
The legal advice, from what I understand and what I heard, was that it wasn't specific that we don't release it. It was, these are the pros and these are the... These are the potential issues that could arise if you do. It was not specifically to say, "Do not release it."
So I don't see other hands, so I'll make a comment. I think this has been challenging and has gone on for a very long time. It doesn't seem to go to bed. I struggle on both sides, whether I see rationale to and I see rationale not to. The reality is, is that this council authorized a report to be done. It was to be done to the city council, and we provided an executive summary to release the full report to council in this manner. Subsequently, also gives it to the general public by way of those redactions through a public records request. And while I don't necessarily take issue with that, the reality is, is that this council, by way of taxpayer funds, did use those funds to pay a professional in order to render that executive summary, which we did provide to the general public, to release the details of that report. In some respects, I think it's... Sorry, I thought I heard whispering. It's a dog. In some respects, doing so allows the public to then attempt to play investigator, and I'm not sure that that's beneficial to us, to the city, to the staff, to the residents. But on the flip side, I do see that there's a narrative out there that we're trying to hide something. And that's simply not the case. And so I'm very torn on what to do here. I do want this to go away. I enjoy the city business and getting stuff done. And we're not getting anything done when this keeps resurrecting itself every single week, whether it's in the general public or by way of the dais. And I meant what I said previously, which is, showed up in the Seattle Times and other places, which is, you know, I just want to move on. I just want to get city business done, and we're struggling to do that. And I'm not sure why. So I don't know what the best path is forward, frankly, and I find myself very much on the fence here. Councilmember Howe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate what you said. And I think that... I'm not going to speak for others. Yeah, we would like to move on, and I think the very best way to move on is to go ahead, do what the motion suggests, what the motion states, so that we can, in fact, finalize a report that the public paid for, get the word draft taken off, finalize it, complete it, and prep it for public consultation. finalize it, complete it, and prep it for public consumption. Because at that point, I mean, we live with a bunch of really smart, intelligent people, and they can come to their own conclusions with that report, and then they can be done with it. In the absence of having a factual report, people will fill that vacuum with all manner of stuff, some of it real, much of it not, because there's nothing to substantiate it. So let's, let's in fact move on. Let's move past this. Let's go ahead, finalize the report, get it ready for public consumption, and put a stake in it and keep going. And just speaking briefly to potential quasi-litigation. You know what? If we deserve it as a city to be sued, then so be it. I know that it's my job to protect the city, absolutely, and that is actually part of my, that, that what I just said is protective. We need to be the kind of council and the kind of city that can admit a mistake or show an error, explain the error, and not do it again, if that's what that requires. So I'm not worried about potential litigation. I don't think that's going to be a factor. And if it is, maybe, you know, maybe it's on us, and maybe we deserve it. But I do think, though, is that we can trust this report with the public because they're our boss.
Councilmember Moran?
I'm going to agree with what Councilmember Trine said. Our attorney did indeed say that this was not a good idea. What she told us today was, okay, and here's what's, here's what's going to happen if you do. Here are some of the things that you're going to see. To me, that doesn't mean she says this could be a good idea. She was just trying to say, here are the things that are going to, you could possibly take care of it. I mean, she was basically, you can take a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. The fact of the matter is, is it doesn't change the fact that we were advised by the attorney. It doesn't change the fact that it's against what is in our council rules. It doesn't change the fact that our job, as we sit up here, as much as we may not like it, is to protect the city. That is our job. And sometimes it's really hard, and it's a really crummy job. But that is our job. And if that means that we get written in really crappy stuff by bloggers sometimes, yeah, that's what's going to happen. But that's part of the whole experience. And that's part of this job. Because the city needs to come first. When you take that oath, you're putting the city first. So I will be voting no on this.
So I think that's ultimately my struggle, is putting the city first. And part of me feels like I have a vested interest in voting yes to let this out because frankly, I'm tired of hearing some of the public comment that we get repeatedly, week after week. I've largely pulled back from my, you know, what I perceive to be my embeddedness in this community as far as social media goes, because it's become just this absolute horrible place. You know, and I used to love this job. It's become a struggle, and a lot of it is because of us. I don't know what the right answer is here. But I know I'm tired, very tired. I don't sit up here on the city council for my own personal reasons, and I certainly see personal reasons to let this out. But I was elected to represent the city as a whole, and I think it's very challenging to let this out and then let the council, or excuse me, let the general public nitpick at the dirty details that are in here. And some of them are just that. I worry about what our staff will think. On both sides. Now, we parted ways with a city manager. Is it good to let them see why? Or is it bad to let them see why? There is an executive summary. It sums up the details that are in that report. I just don't know if the details getting out do anybody any good. Councilmember Howe?
You know, I, this will be my last comment on this. I can't think of a better way than to just let this go and to move on. It's, I appreciate that the people are stewing about it. Honestly, this is one of those things that, once it's out, it's out, and then it's over with. It will be done. It'll be put to bed, and there'll be the next thing that will come up. Because that's the way life works. So it, I wish I could give you the kind of assurance that I feel and the kind of confidence that I feel, that this too will pass. That, yeah, let's get this out there. Let's get this over with. Let's rip off the Band-Aid, have the discussion if it needs to happen. But we will already have moved on to the city's business. And to be honest, we are moving ahead with the city's business. We get through our agenda items. We bring up things that are important. We'll be getting through the rest of the agenda tonight, and we'll be moving ahead. We'll be pressing ahead. So let's just dispense with it. Let it go.
Councilmember Lamb?
I support this motion because, and I made the motion, because we need to move forward. I understand, Kristi, and you have said you don't want to keep on looking in the rearview mirror, but we will always be looking in the rearview mirror. Anytime there is any issue regarding how transparent we are, the same issue is going to come up again, and we will never earn the trust of our residents unless we release this report. And for that reason, I hope all council members vote in favor of this motion.
Councilmember Moran?
Council has never done this in the past. So this would be a new precedent-setting. And frankly, precedent-setting because primarily we have a few bloggers making an awful lot of noise, which none of the ones making the most noise even live in the city. Just makes me wonder whether or not we should stand back and think for just a moment. This is about the city. This isn't about, it makes me think of when my kids were small and they were stomping their feet. That doesn't mean you give in. That means you think about what the right thing to do is. So, again, our job is to protect the city. Our job, if we're not going to listen to the attorney, why have the attorney? I don't understand that. If we're not going to, and if you don't want to listen to this attorney, go back to all the precedents, any precedents set in the past. If we're not going to do it, why bother?
So as I've listened to my fellow councilmembers, I'm going to make an amendment. I'm going to make the amendment to release the draft report, which is attorney-client privileged to the city council. And I am doing that because a lot of what's in the report is already out in the public venue via court documents. They've been splashed on Facebook, and I want to look at that and compare them. So that is, my amendment is to release the draft report to the city council as still attorney-client privileged document.
I'll second it.
Okay, the amendment's been seconded, so. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion, amendment fails. So we're back to the main motion. Is there any further discussion on the main motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay. Nay.
Three-three, motion fails. Okay. Entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
So moved?
Seconded.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six-zero, consent is passed. The next item we have is a proclamation. This is for Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Are there any councilmembers that would like to read this proclamation?
I would be delighted.
Thank you, Councilmember Howe.
Samamish, Washington proclamation, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, May 2022. Whereas, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage in the United States was celebrated beginning in 1978 and was made into a month-long event in 1992. And whereas, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month seeks to honor and recognize the contributions of residents from Asia, India, the Pacific Islands, and whereas Native Ameri, Native Hawaiians, Chinese, and Japanese were the first to immigrate to the Pacific Northwest and were known for handling canoes and transporting goods, construction, and railroad expansion. And Asian Pacific encompasses all of the Asian continent and the Pacific Islands of the Melanesia, New Guinea, New Caledonia, Vanuatu, Fiji, and the Solomon Islands, Micronesia, Marianas, Guam, Wake Islands, Palau, Marshall Islands, Kiribati, Nauru, and the Federated States of Micronesia, and Polynesia, New Zealand, Hawaiian Islands, Rotuma, Midway Islands, Samoa, American Samoa, Tonga, Tuvalu, Cook Islands, American Polynesia, and Easter Island. And whereas during Asian American and Pacific Islander AAPI Heritage Month, we acknowledge Asians and Pacific Islanders have lived and worked in Washington for more than 200 years. The Asian population in Samamish is 31.7% of the US Census, contributing to Washington's and the United States' economy, culture, education, politics, arts, literature, science, and technological developments, despite institutional and systemic injustices designed to prevent and limit these achievements and contributions. And during, and whereas during AAPI Heritage Month, we acknowledge the additional determination, hard work, and perseverance AAPI must put forth to be heard, seen, and that these, and that these additional efforts are a result of inequitable institutional and systemic injustices. And whereas despite these contributions and leadership, the role of AAPI in US history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American. That be it further resolved that the city of Samamish strongly encourages our staff and community to observe, recognize, and celebrate the culture, heritage, and contributions of Asian American Pacific Islanders to our country, our state, and our city, and our schools, May 2020, as an Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
Thank you, Councilmember Howe. Okay, next, we have a presentation. This is the 2022 American Society of Civil Engineers Local Outstanding Civil Engineering Achievement Award for the Ebright Creek Fish Passage Project. I'm going to turn this over to Jeff Elkish.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilmembers, and acting city manager. Tonight's item will be introduced by Audrey Starsey, our deputy director. And as they come on board, we have two other staff, staff person and a consultant on board. So Audrey?
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. As Jeff mentioned, I'm Audrey Starsey, Deputy Public Work Structure. This evening, we are extremely proud to present the 2022 ASCE Local Outstanding Civil Engineering Award for the Ebright Creek Fish Passage Project. Here this evening, and they're just coming on board, joining us as panelists, but here this evening, we'll be discussing the project and the award. The city's senior stormwater engineer, Stephanie Sullivan, as well as Stephanie Wong from Osborne Consulting. And with that, Stephanie, please take it away.
Thank you, Audrey, for that introduction. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present this award to you tonight. The Ebright Creek Fish Passage Project was a culvert replacement carried out by the city last year, and construction was completed last fall. I'm honored to share that the project was awarded the 2022 Local Outstanding Civil Engineering Achievement Award for the Water Resources category by the Seattle Chapter of American Society of Civil Engineers. I wanted to share a photo of the actual award with you, but it's actually still being made. So as soon as we receive it, we'll find a proper place for it at City Hall. Osborne Consulting, who's with me tonight, led the design team, including DCG, who provided structural, utilities, and roadway restoration design, and the Watershed Company, who provided restoration plantings design. Johansson Construction Company was the contractor, and KBA provided construction management. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Osborne Consulting and the design team for their hard work. I'm really proud of what we've accomplished together to improve habitat and support salmon recovery. Next slide. To give you some background, this culvert replacement and fish passage improvement was prioritized by council in 2016 to give our Kocane the best chance at survival. It was approved on our Stormwater Capital Improvement Plan, building on the Kocane Work Group's blueprint for the restoration and enhancement of Lake Samamish Kocane tributaries. As shown on this map, Ebright Creek is one of the four primary spawning streams, highlighted in dark blue. Project design started in November 2019, just months before COVID-19 would change our world. The project team worked closely with permitting agencies, stakeholders, and utility providers to replace this outdated culvert on East Lake Samamish Parkway in pursuit of our goals. Our design eliminated the fish passage barrier, increased flow capacity, improved stream habitat, relocated and maintained underground and overhead utilities, and realigned the creek to reflect natural conditions. So these are just a few of the reasons why our project was selected for this award. Next slide. So I added this slide into the presentation today because I also want to take this opportunity to give a big thank you to the community of Samamish and adjacent property owners for their support. The city received funding from the Bryan Abbott Fish Barrier Removal Board, which is overseen by the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife and the Recreation and Conservation Office. We were also granted funding from the King County Flood Control District, and Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District contributed to the forward-compatible sewer elements of the project. I'm really grateful for our partners who coordinated with us on design and utility relocation during the project. This included King County Parks, Comcast, PSE, and Zipley. Now I'll give it to Stephanie Wong from Osborne Consulting to share a few more details about the project.
Thank you, Stephanie. So I'm going to go over some highlights of the design and construction. The previous crossing consisted of two 30-inch diameter concrete culverts, which were replaced by a 14-foot-span fish-passable culvert. Property owners included King County to the west of the crossing and a private landowner to the east. Although the total project length was relatively short, about 150 feet, habitat features were densely incorporated into the channel, including large-wody material to provide habitat diversity. Trees removed during the construction were reused for some of the large-wody material. Meander bars and habitat boulders were also installed within the culvert to promote hydraulic complexity. Many utilities required relocation, including a water main, communications lines, a power pole, and sanitary sewer that needed to penetrate the bottom portion of the culvert, as shown in the section on the upper right. Forward compatibility was also a key focus of the project. The city of Samamish and Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District coordinated to install an additional casing under the culvert to accommodate a future sewer line, as shown in the section on the bottom right. And the project ensured that the design would be compatible for future road widening for potential pedestrian improvements. Here are a couple of construction photos. The photo on the left shows the culvert installation and sewer penetration through the culvert. And the photo on the right shows the culvert backfilled with streambed sediment and the culvert lid installation. Because large amounts of sediment moved through this stream, the streambed material was designed to mimic the existing streambed to help preserve transport processes. And the full road closure allowed the project to be constructed efficiently within a short window. The city did an excellent job communicating project updates to the community through their web platform, providing weekly updates on the status of the project during construction. Here are a couple of more photos during construction. This project was a highly collaborative effort where communication and coordination with agencies and stakeholders were key. For example, the team coordinated with King County, who will replace another culvert under the East Lake Samamish Trail that's immediately downstream of the project by sharing design information and coordinating restoration plantings to minimize duplication of efforts in the future. The project also had great support of the local landowner. The project also had great support of a local landowner who owns the property east of the crossing. He's actually an active member of the kokanee work group and was involved on site visits, design review, and construction meetings. The project also incorporated input from WDFW, the Muckleshoot Tribe, and the Brian Abbott Fish Barrier Removal Board Technical Review Team into the design, especially regarding large woody material placement. The photo on the left shows the upstream side of the project during the installation of the large woody material. Engineers were onsite during construction to ensure that the wood placement interacted with the stream as intended. And the photo on the right shows the downstream side of the project shortly after construction. And lastly, here are a few post-construction photos. Kokanee salmon have been spotted passing through the culvert in November. And with this project and the future replacement of the downstream King County culvert, over a mile of spawning habitat along Ebright Creek will be accessible to the kokanee salmon, as well as other species, including steelhead, coho salmon, and cutthroat trout. And chunuk salmon also use the delta areas and lower stream reaches for juvenile rearing. And with that, that concludes our presentation.
Thank you all so much. This is a really cool project. I know myself and I think a few other council members have the opportunity to go down to Zakuus and also to Ebright and see the kokanee coming back through there. And so this is really a very cool project. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, council, our next item is an introduction to the 2022 Storm and Surface Water Rate Study. I think Jeff, you're back on again.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and Acting City Manager. My name is Jeff Ellicash, I'm the Public Works Director. The purpose of this agenda item is intended to provide an overview on how the stormwater utility is funded, the importance of the rate studies, and the approach to the 2022 rate study before us. In addition, staff plans to introduce the topics of three proposed issue papers to the council, as well as provide an overview of levels of service. Audrey Starsey, our Deputy Public Works Director, will be leading the presentation and Q and A. Audrey?
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening again, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. Give me a minute, please. I'll go ahead and share my screen. Okay, can you see my screen? Okay. So we'll go ahead and get things started. This is meant to just be an introduction to the rate study. We do have numerous public meetings, open houses, as well as council meetings scheduled throughout the rate study. We anticipate the rate study continuing on through September of this year. The goals of the meeting tonight is to introduce the rate study to you, discuss, as Jeff mentioned, a few of our policy papers that we have proposed, as well as get some initial feedback on some of our concepts for levels of service for the utility. So I will try to provide a very quick overview of the storming surface water utility. The majority of our works comes from our NPDS, which is National Fluid and Elimination Discharge System, and federal requirements. So most of our work comes from those. I'll quickly go through those, as well as provide an overview of how the utility is funded, the why behind the rate study, and finally, we'll end with a discussion on levels of service in our policy papers. So I think you'll start to recognize these slides. We have developed these for every council presentation, but we'll be coming from the Public Works Department to provide an overview of the topics for the evening. So within Public Works, we have seven different divisions, including administration. So tonight, this presentation is coming to you from the Storm and Surface Water Utility. We do have some very high-level items for you on the right of our screen that show some of our 2020, sorry, 2022 work plan items. As you can see, several of those items do relate back to our NPDS permit, although certainly not all of our items. Just to provide a very quick overview, I just wanted to share this screen. This provides the permit differences between permit cycles. So our NPDS permits are issued to us by the State Department of Ecology every five years. So we are in the 2019 to 2024 permit cycle. As you can tell by the list here, each permit cycle has more and more requirements. And as I was discussing earlier, majority of what we do for the utility is our efforts to comply with our permit. And just to give a little bit of context, we did provide one line item in there is maintenance and operations. So one of our requirements for our permit is to inspect all of our catch basins. And we have almost 13,000 catch basins in the city, and we need to do, complete those inspections every two years. So there's quite a bit of work that goes into just permit compliance. I did want to show this slide. I know we discussed this last September, but I think it provides a nice overview for how our permit cycles can interact with some of our city comprehensive planning efforts. And this slide goes into detail about when our first surface water comprehensive plan is developed, and subsequent rate studies, and where we are today with our third permit cycle, and actually our third rate study. So it kind of shows some future efforts that we have planned for the next permit cycle as well. And so finding the stormwater utility, our primary revenue source, our surface water management fees, as we may have spoke to those earlier this evening. King County does handle our billing for us, so I'll go into that a little bit more in the next slide. Our surface water or swim fees are guided by strategies and plans, ultimately rate studies, and then set by council. So council typically adopts a rate study, and then also adopts a fee schedule every year as part of our budget cycle. Rate studies typically project the revenue that we need for both operations and capital projects for six to 10 years out. Sometimes they can look up to 20 years out. And typically, most jurisdictions go through a rate study every three to five years to make sure that the fees are aligning with both city and utility goals. As I mentioned before, King County does collect our surface water fees for us. Since we do not operate a water and sewer utility, we utilize King County to collect those fees for us, including themselves. King County does support, I think, 16 or 17 other jurisdictions in their billing efforts, so we are not alone. They do come out on our property tax statements, so oftentimes residents do confuse them as a tax, but they're not. They are a utility fee. Our current billing structure is set up, we converted our billing rate structure a few years ago, and they are set up as an equivalent service unit, or ESU. So the ESU is for 3,500 square feet of impervious surface. Each single-family resident has, parcel has the same, same flat fee, $396 per year for one ESU. For our multifamily and commercial properties, they're also billed for ESU, but they are billed based on the number of ESUs. So I believe their most expensive, their most, I guess, most expensive parcel, I believe, is billed about $130,000 annually. So it can really vary depending on how much impervious surface we have. But diving into the rate study a little bit, we just kicked off our rate study. So the first element of every rate study is we can take the opportunity to look at some fiscal policies that the city has developed. So we're kind of in that first initial stage right now. With this rate study, we would like to develop some levels of service criteria. So we have three proposed for council. We can certainly expand on those in subsequent meetings and add to those. Along the way, we'll take a look at our operation and maintenance revenue needs going out six to 10 years, some staffing needs, and other resource needs that we would need to have to meet those levels of service, and of course, update our capital plan based on levels of service as well. Finally, once we have reached that point, we'll establish our revenue needs for the level of service that council selects, and then we'll adopt the final rate study in September. So the utility is proposing three fiscal policy papers for this particular rate study. We would like to concur this evening on those papers. We can certainly add an additional paper or change a topic should council direct us that way. So the first paper that we propose to discuss is a review of our fiscal policies that we currently have in place. We have operational reserves in place and capital reserves in place. Those were first enacted through the last rate study, so fairly new. We want to take a look at those and make sure that they're working well, make any adjustments as needed with those, as well as take a look at bonding and revenue options for the utility, as well as start to dive into asset management, knowing that we have aging infrastructure in some of our pipes. The second policy paper that we would like to take another look at is our needs credits. So this was also looked at with the last rate study. We want to take another look at that to see if this is something that is working for the utility going into the future. So currently, commercial parcels can receive up to a 35% discount on their swim fee rate every year if they need maintenance for their facilities. It does involve a lot of staff time, and it kind of creates a little bit of uncertainty in terms of how much revenue the utility could be running in. So we want to take another look at that, as well as actually looking at the other side of things is code enforcement. So what happens if a facility does not maintain their system? And can we start applying some code enforcement to support that so that our systems are maintained as they should be? The last paper that we would like to take a look at with our consulting team is implementing a local improvement district. Is that something that is feasible for the utility, knowing that we have aging infrastructure? We have a long list of retrofits that we would like to start to implement. This is something that can be done. If so, what are the benefits, what are the challenges? And how could that include, you know, or address DEI in the future as well? I believe I included this slide last fall when I did speak to you about the utility. This, I called this the bubble slide. It was really meant to just show how some of our functions of the utility can overlap with each other. They're all connected. The blue bubbles represent our NPDS requirements, the light tan color are kind of our non-NPDS programs. The green bubbles are programmatic city efforts, and the purple are something that we have planned for the future. So it's really taking a look at all of those bubbles and figuring out from those just how we can address our city stormwater goals through comprehensive plans, and then basic plans and capital plans, all while addressing improvement compliance. Once we have an itemized list, we can develop levels of service and of course, our revenue requirement. This is just a preliminary look at levels of service in several other jurisdictions. Have you utilized a similar approach? I do recognize that the two levels of service on the right look very similar right now. As we further define our projects and costs, those two columns will likely become a little bit more distinguishable. One thing for council to consider in our future conversations is the amount of funding that can go into each one of those projects and programs may be a separating factor for those, whether to enhance your optimum level of service as well. And finally, I did mention earlier, we are hoping to conclude or adopt our rate study in September of this year. This is a rough outline. We do have a meeting scheduled in June, where we'll be discussing the draft papers that we discussed earlier, as well as drill down a little bit more into the levels of service that we did present tonight. We would like to have a few open houses where we can interact with the community a little bit more, and then come back with some feedback to council in August, then proceed on with adopting the final rate study in September. With that, that is the end of our presentation for the evening. We are asking for council concurrence with our approach to the rate study this year, as well as what your thoughts and feedback are in our fiscal policy papers. And of course, if you have any feedback on levels of service or anything else with the rate study. With that, I will turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Audrey. Council, questions, comments? Councilmember Howe.
Thank you for this. It was very useful to get this presentation. It really is a nice setup. When you're talking about levels of service, have you done, you're looking at doing comparables because you haven't done this work yet, right? So you're looking at comparables of other cities, for example, and what they've got in place? That's the question.
Yes, so several other cities have approached their utility rate studies with levels of service. It's often done when the utility reaches a point where their project list is much longer than their resources, and so it helps to define what that list looks like from going forward. And it's a really great opportunity for staff as well. It provides us very clear direction going forward as well. So we don't necessarily have to stick to the three that we've identified, but it's something that other cities have done, and it's worked very well for them.
And do you happen to know of other cities have had to look at like a fee forgiveness type of a program where they've had residents, you know, have incapacity to, no capacity to pay the fees? Or is that not? Well, I guess, these are levied right at the construction?
Oh, no, so these, we do have two kinds of fees for the city. We, I actually did not speak about our connection charges. I apologize. I can bring those back at the next meeting. These are fees that primarily fund the utility that everyone essentially has assessed this fee every year. So if you look in your property texting, you'll see this covers all the needs.
That's what I was thinking. And does that ever, is there ever a question raised about that from a resident saying these have gone up too much, or?
We don't actually typically get a whole lot of requests or questions about the fees. I think we do a pretty good job of always advocating what it pays for as well, and the stormwater qualities, our flow control, its flood prevention, its permit compliance, and it covers salaries.
Oh, no, I understand.
Consultant time projects and all that stuff. But it'll be interesting with our open houses, what kind of feedback we get as well.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any other hands up, so I'll offer some feedback. I think the questions that you had are, do we concur with staff's recommendations? And I do, I think they're good. I did have one question, which is the issue papers. I assume those are, that work is already budgeted for? Okay, so if council were to add something, and I'm not suggesting that we should, but if we were to add something, as was noted, that would not be budgeted for, and that would be additional cost. Okay. Thank you. One additional thing that I just wanted to clarify, obviously, the city doesn't pay property tax on its own parcels, but I noted in the agenda bill that it said that the city pays stormwater fees. And I wondered if that was all of our properties? Is that parks? Is that just like the MOC and City Hall? I was surprised to see that the city is charging itself. Yes.
And that's a great question. I can double check with that, but I believe that we do, in fact, bill ourselves for our own impervious surfaces that we do have in the city. But it's often, it's something that typically most cities decide, you know, one way or the other, we are in fact, billing ourselves, and it goes right back into our own funds. But at the same time, there is that option there of, we do have impervious surface as well, so it can be charged. And again, it's part of that facility cost and going back to the, for a way.
Sure, okay.
I can clarify.
Thanks. Councilmember Trean.
Yeah, I think you guys are headed in the right direction. I think your approach is really good. I like the three papers. I think you're, the only thing I don't see spelled out, but I know is in some of the details and probably will come out from what the work the consultant will do, but is on climate change issues and what's transpiring with the change in our weather patterns or the amount of waterfall that's coming out of the sky, or temperature changes. And so, so I think I'm right on that, right, Audrey, that the climate change issue is actually embedded in this, or is that something we would have to pay extra for?
So that's a great question. So the climate change, I guess, is embedded when you look at. So that's a great question. Um so the climate change, um I guess is embedded when you look at, um I guess, council's approach. To levels of service and funding different projects. So um for example, all of our projects have a scoring element to them that does include um climate change. They are given more points if they do, uh for example, retrofit, if it addresses climate change, the project would score higher. So should council decide with our levels of service to fund that project? Or maybe an entire retrofit program that may include, you know, up to twenty projects um at a faster rate or first. Um that essentially would be one way to kind of look at things through a climate change lens, if you went through the big study.
And then you're going to come back with us to uh present, and then we're going to set the criteria.
Yes, we'll have some draft criteria, um some comparables of what other cities have used for their criteria. And that would certainly be up for council discussion um at the next meeting.
Right. Appreciate it. Thank you for your hard work and definitely like the graphic organizer.
Councilmember Liam.
So you mentioned a scoring criteria. Um if it benefits climate change, it'll get additional points. So given that we don't have a climate action plan, how do you assign points? Because within like climate, there's so many different um levels, if you will. Like some areas would benefit climate more and some less. So how do you score if there is no baseline to measure how we're addressing climate?
Um that's another great question. I would need to can probably consult with um our stormwater team just to make sure. Um but in terms of that criteria itself, it was it was meant to be consistent across all projects so that we have a consistent way to prioritize different projects. Um in terms of climate change itself, um that may be a little bit objective with with each scoring, and that does allow for a little bit of flexibility. But um a retrofit project is a great example. Um you know, as stormwater has progressed through the decades. Um things that were built, you know, forty years ago, they don't have water quality and certainly don't have capacity for the type of um rainfall that we are seeing today and will likely get in the future. So something like retrofitting um upon that is existing would score would receive more more points because it is looking at. Um some higher volumes that we need to retain water from one of the time and more of it. But I can get back to you if you'd like a little bit more technical details. I would just need to reach out to our our engineering team for this.
Counsel, if anyone hasn't spoken and would like to give input to staff, just so that they know that they've got some consensus from council, that would, I think, probably be helpful. Deputy Mayor Clark.
Um yeah, thank you guys so much for your work and the presentation. Uh I agree, it looks good and looking forward to the next presentation on this. Thank you.
So Jeff, Audrey, do you feel like you have what you need from council?
Uh yes, I would say that there's consensus of the council to move forward with that which we proposed. There may be an opportunity for a change which could either come out of uh out of um our management reserve. Or to come back to council for additional authority along the way, should we need to do so. And then um Audrey's going to follow up with uh some more detail on the climate. Uh climate change issue, which we'll report back into a memo to council in in the following week or so. So yes, I think we're there. Audrey, did I miss anything?
Sounds good.
Very good. Thank you both. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counsel, why don't we take a five-minute break here and then we can circle back on our next item? Does that work for everyone? Okay, all right. We'll see you in five minutes. I'm gonna turn this over to Anjali Meyer, Kevin Teague, Shelby Peralt. Right after they get promoted. There we go, there's Kevin. Shelby. And Anjali, great.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, and Mr. Acting City Manager. I'm Anjali Meyer, Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities. Our team is excited to introduce to you the master plan process for Beeden Hill Park and Big Rock South. The acquisition of Beeden Hill Park was made possible by council's vision and adoption of a land acquisition program a few years ago. As well as a King County Conservation Futures Grant. And Big Rock South came to us through the very generous donation of Mary Piggott. Thank you to each of you for investing the time to tour these parcels with staff in the last couple of weeks. To provide you with context for you to share your hopes, dreams, and concerns with us tonight. Staff joining me tonight are Kevin Teague, Deputy Director of our Department who oversees all capital planning. And Shelby Peralt, Project Manager. I'll now turn it over to Shelby to introduce the consultant team and make the presentation.
Thank you, Anjali. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council, and Acting City Manager. As Anjali mentioned, we will be discussing the Big Rock Park South and Beaten Hill Park Master Plan Project. And I am very excited to begin this phase of the project with you tonight. With me this evening from our consultant team is Juliette Bong, Principal of H V B Landscape Architecture. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to discuss your hopes, dreams, and concerns for each park, as well as your vision for each park. You may notice that each park name has a little bit of a different color, and as we progress through the PowerPoint, there will be site-specific information that we are discussing. So we wanted to include some subtle cues when we're speaking to individual parks. Juliette and I will be tag teaming tonight's presentation. I will introduce both park sites, walk you through the timeline for the master plan, and discuss project background. And then I will hand things off to Juliette, and she will walk you through existing conditions at both sites before leading our discussion on hopes, dreams, concerns, and visions. And then we will conclude with next steps. So starting off with introduction to the master plan and project sites. Uh when starting on a master plan process, we look to previous comprehensive studies such as our twenty eighteen Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan, AKA the Pro Plan. As a baseline to understand what is important to our community, what has already been discussed, and what the citywide vision is for our park system. Uh the Pro Plan goal is to see parks as an integral part of our healthy and sustainable community by connecting people to nature, play, and culture. And then within that overall vision, there are three core goals. One, the conservation of natural resources. Two, improving health and wellness. And then three, social equity and access to parks and recreation for all of our residents. This becomes one of many lenses that you will hear us talk about throughout this entire process. We will continuously come back to this vision and these core goals as we test design ideas, concepts, and what we hear in the early stages of the process. So to help orient everyone, um Beaten Hill Park and Big Rock Park South are centrally located within the city. Beaten Hill, which is highlighted in red on the north side, is located half a mile west of the Mamish Commons and the town center boundary. Um and then Beaten Hill is across the street from Big Rock Park North. Um and the Big Rock Park properties, which are all connected and terminate with Big Rock Park South along Southeast Twentieth Street. And then within a close proximity to these parks are E Bright Creek Park to the west and then Pine Lake Park to the south. And then next, moving on to an overview of the master plan process, timeline, and background for each park site. Um we want to remind people what a master plan is and what it isn't. A master plan is a guiding document. It's intended to set the vision for each park, to look at what types of uses, activities, and program we want to see. And also to look at the relationships of those programmatic elements to make sure that they fit within the context of the site, that they are feasible. And that we also consider what the short and long-term goals of those elements might be. So we go through this extensive public process that you see here. The community survey and public meeting, which is outlined in blue, is coming up with this phase. We haven't started designing anything yet. We are in the listening phase to hear what everyone has to say about their likes and dislikes, about how the site is functioning. As well as their dreams for how the site could function in the future. There will be multiple touchpoints with the community, the commission, and the council as we continue to develop and refine concepts at both sites. And then what a master plan is not is a detailed design, and that's important to remember. We do look at feasibility, we look at relationships, we look at structures that are needed to support programming. Um but there is more detailed design um that comes with implementation of those amenities, and that is not included in the master plan. Our final deliverable will be a report for each park. Funds for implementing the master plan may be budgeted for in the future after adoption of our report. And then improvements to the park may be completed in phases over time. And then I will quickly walk you through the master plan timeline. So we are at the very beginning of the project. We had our kickoff meeting and staff workshop last month and are in the site investigation and analysis stage. We will be meeting with um the community at some outreach events and publishing a community survey. This outreach, along with site analysis, helps to set the framework for developing goals and objectives of the park program. Um and then preparing three concept alternatives at each park for feedback. We then move on to master plan development where we continue to refine those concepts and then narrow them down into one preferred plan. Once consensus is reached on preferred plans at both park sites, the CIPA process begins. And then following CIPA determination, staff return to city council for formal adoption of each master plan. And then we anticipate that this process will take approximately twelve to eighteen months. And then next is a little bit of history for each park. So starting off with Beaton, which is highlighted in red. This park is made up of two parcels that total just under nine and a half acres. They were purchased in twenty eighteen in an effort to preserve open space in a rapidly developing area in the city. It's named for the family that owned the farmstead for over eighty years. And then following acquisition, the city was awarded a King County Conservation Futures Grant as a reimbursement for approximately four acres of the property. And this will be designated for permanent conservation. And then the home and accessory buildings were demolished after acquisition, and the land is now vacant. And then next is Big Rock Park, which is the third and final property in the fifty-one acre phased land donation agreement. This property was donated in November of twenty twenty-one and totals fifteen acres. And then like the conditions placed on the previous two parcels, this park will facilitate a variety of low-impact active and passive activities. And this may include nature trails, open space, and passive sports meadows. There are a few existing structures on this parcel and a great network of established trails. And with that, I will pass the baton to Juliette, and she will walk you through existing conditions and the discussion portion of tonight.
Shelby, so we're going to start looking at Beaten Hill Park. Um it there is a number of existing features on the site. There's some sensitive areas that we'll show you in a few minutes. Um and then that tree preservation area uh is highlighted in red here is that four-acre conservation zone that Shelby mentioned previously. It does have a number of mature trees on it, and overall, the site is very characterized by these kind of lovely rolling hills. Um that reminisce of of the natural farmlands that used to be uh throughout the valley here. Um it is currently vacant. You can actually see the little um space uh down in the lower left-hand corner, the nice little square that looks a little geometric there. Is where the residents originally sat. Uh when we look at some of the photos of what it looks like today, you can see those meadows and the rolling hills. Um it feels very pastoral. Um you can see uh there are some steeper slopes, so the kind of low point is on the south end, which would be the bottom of our screen across from Big Rock North. And then the high point is up towards the top of this view where you see the residences. Um it is steeper. It's not super steep, but it is a little bit of a challenge from accessibility to get up that hill. Um and then however, when you look back, you see this view number four, you can really see the lovely expanse down into Big Rock Park. So you start to see the um kind of the connectivity of the green spaces through this area. There are so sensitive areas on the site. There's an existing pond, an existing kind of creek, sort of larger wetland system that combines the two that we'll show you on this next slide. So the blue area that you see here hatched in that diagonal pattern is the wetland. Um and that basically uh follows along a seasonal stream that you see kind of starting in the upper right-hand corner of the site. And it follows along pretty much right along the property line until it um goes through a culvert and ultimately connects to E Bright Creek Tributary that continues down through Big Rock. Um the pond is also part of that system, and essentially what happens when you're out there is that water kind of starts in what feels like this kind of lovely little seasonal. Like babbling brook kind of character, but then it quickly expanses out and just really spreads out throughout the meadow area and becomes that wetland system. There's a nice open field prairie uh that you see labeled here with a little bit of a flatter spot, almost like a natural terrace, and the slopes um relatively small, but still. Um something that we want to take some opportunity for. Um and then the rolling hills and the high point and the low point that I mentioned earlier. That dashed kind of a dotted white line that you see is our wetland buffer boundary. It also is um kind of combined with the stream boundary where we're adjacent to the stream. So we have all this great topography that is um a great opportunity because it gives it a lot of character to the site. It also will have some constraints with accessibility, same with those wetlands and streams, great opportunity for education, to enhance it, to really give it some ecological value. Also a constraint in how much space it really does take up on the site. So moving to Big Rock Park South. So Big Rock Park South, you can see here in the property line and the dashed white line, uh the entrance uh to the existing residence is off of Southeast Twentieth. And you have kind of a larger hedge that you uh if you're familiar with the area that you see right now. As you come into the site, there are a series of interconnecting um sort of sensitive areas and wetlands and pond that we'll show you on the next slide in a minute. But you really do get the sense of kind of a very garden-esque feeling around the residence where there's clearly a lot of effort put into the landscape. Um and then as you move towards the north side of the property, you get closer to that connection to the rest of the Big Rock Park properties. Um and you just start to feel this great little um meandering walks through the trees. And so you have that really great mix of open meadow and canopyed forest throughout the site. Some of the photos you see here, the trails uh you see in the upper left-hand corner, um they're named, they're great fun names, most of them anyways. Um so it is really kind of a a a great resource that they have already have in place out there. Um the gardens uh that you can see particularly on the right-hand side, the existing pond, the weeping willows, just a lot of really clear care put into developing this site is a lovely place. And then um the couple of open meadows that we also have some opportunities for some recreation. Um there are five uh structures on the site, so this next slide identifies and shows you some photos of those five structures. Um from a couple of different garages, a very large barn, um very eclectic chicken coop next to the barn. That's kind of fun out there now. Um a single-family residence and then a pool house. So there is no pool. There used to be a pool. What you see in that photo number one is the sport court that takes the place of what used to be the pool, and the pool house is off in that background. So opportunities and constraints on this site, there are a great number of existing trails. Um those are the red dashed lines. Uh some of them are quite close to wetlands, so we'll start to look at that as part of this master planning process. You see the wetlands again in that um angled blue uh hatch, as well as their buffer and the white outlines. Um the buffers show a little bit off to the property, but really, we're going to be focused on our property for the limits of those buffers. Uh although the wetlands themselves do extend off the property as well. Uh you can see all the res- the the structures that are on the south side of the property. The um wetland system is actually currently in character connected, at least a couple of those wetlands and streams are, so everything kind of flows into the pond, and then the pond flows out. Uh there is a fair amount of flooding that occurs today, so one of the things we'll be looking at is how that system works, how the interconnectedness um can be better supported to support more natural functions. And also just make it a lot more easier to to maintain during the rainy seasons. Um it does have some great opportunities, both in the reuse of the existing buildings, um some great site histories, some stories that you have from um the residents that was there. And then, of course, all the connections that can take you from here all the way up to Beaten Hill. So with that, we want to start into a discussion of our two park sites. Uh we're hoping to facilitate this discussion as we go through. Um we can kind of. We can kind of start with each park specifically to see if there's some specific ideas for them. So the way this is going to work, Shelby is going to help take some notes. So she, I think, will be sharing her screen in a minute so we can all watch her as she tries to keep up with the conversation that we have today. And we're going to really start with what your hopes, dreams, and concerns are for the park. So we're going to kind of categorize them as you talk to us about the hopes and dreams versus the concerns. But for the sake of time and just to be able to really have this free-flow discussion of your thoughts, you can go ahead and just talk about the hopes, dreams, and concerns as one whole. And Madam Mayor, since I'm not able to quite see who's in line and what's in the same line, I'm hoping you can kind of help facilitate to make sure we do hear from everybody. So starting with Beaton Hill, let's open up to the floor, and we'd love to hear your ideas.
Yeah, Council, if you'll use that raise your hand feature. And I can only see because of this screen if you have a camera on. So if your camera's off, I can't see you. Deputy Mayor Clark.
This is just for Beaton Hill, right, first?
We're going to start with Beaton Hill, just hopes, dreams, and concerns. We'll go to vision, and then we'll go to Big Rock South.
Okay, cool. So hopes and dreams, of course, walking access on 218th. Some sort of something to get from the top there through to Big Rock. And hopes and dreams is, yeah, walking trails. And I think, you know, yesterday, there was talk of like passive use up top through the trees there. Love that idea, and yeah, really excited to use it. And as far as concerns, I don't know if there eventually will be a parking concern. I can't remember what we left off on that yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Howe.
Yeah, on the concern side, I think parking is going to be a concern because I think it'll be a popular and attractive magnet. On the hopes and dreams side, there just seemed like a natural amphitheater opportunity for Beaton Hill. And so I'd love to explore that just to see if that was something that still was considered passive.
I'll jump in since I don't see any more hands up. I would like to see a field here as far as soccer field, some kind of athletic field on this. When we originally purchased that, that was part of our discussion since we're a little shy of fields in the city. If we can provide passive use through the conservation area, I think that would be nice to provide some trails through there. Certainly want to be respectful of the buffer and the wetland that is there that ultimately ends up in E. Bright. As far as parking, because this park is actually fairly small, at least in perspective to Big Rock, I have never once seen every parking spot used at Big Rock. Of course, parking might be an issue if we put a field there. So that would be the consideration if we put a field there. But I do would really like to see a field there. And if a field does not fit, given the constraints of the buffer, the other thing that I would like to see, and you're going to hear me say this again, it may be more appropriate in Big Rock South, is we need another off-leash dog area. Unfortunately, people are already using Beaton Hill because the gates are down in several areas, and I have seen a lot of people over there with off-leash dogs in that park. I also see them in Big Rock Park off-leash a lot. And I think we need another off-leash area somewhere in the city aside from Beaver Lake. They don't have to be huge like Beaver Lakes, but I just think it would be nice to provide that place for folks.
If I can ask a clarifying question, Madam Mayor, when you say sports fields, we did kind of look soccer, just to kind of get a sense of scale. Takes up pretty much the whole site. A full-size baseball takes up the vast majority of the site. Little League still is a lot of grading topography to fit it in there. Is there a specific, you know, are we just talking fields in general if we can fit them? Or is there something specific?
I think when we originally looked at this, the idea of having a soccer field was there. I think Andjali mentioned during our tours that we took of the site that it may not be like a regulation-sized field. That would be more like a practice field potentially. But I just, it would be interesting to see what we can fit there athletic field-wise.
We can certainly look at more modified and practice and informal as opposed to formal. We did take a quick look at that. The feasibility would be very challenging, to say the least. But modified, informal, open lawn, things that you could use to support some more of the informal athletic programming and practices, potentially. We can take a look at that. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Councilmember Lamb.
All our city parks are very unique, each in its own way, like whether they have a lake, like Pine Lake or Beaver Lake. Big Rock Park has a zip line. Big Rock Central has a treehouse, so they're all very unique. It would be great that Beaton Hill has its own uniqueness. So I do like the idea of a natural amphitheater, if that works, or an off-leash dog area. I've always subscribed to the idea that parks need people, you know? People need parks, but parks also need people. And if this park has a feature that is unique to this park alone, then it will have people. You know, it feels very wild to me, maybe because there's still a lot of open, there's open area and a lot of grass. And so in some ways, it'd be really interesting to see if we can preserve that feeling. Thank you.
Councilmember Moran.
I have to say, the first thing that I brought up last week when I went on the tour was the natural amphitheater, so I have to agree with that because I look at that park as kind of the gateway to what will be town center. And I think that that is something that I find to be welcoming and to have music and a place for people to gather in the summertime. I don't see a dog park in the same spot, but I mean, I could be wrong. I just don't see it there in the same location. But when I looked at the park, and I just kind of, now granted, we were there the day that we had rain and hail and sleet and wind, and we hit it all. But that's what I saw, that was the first thing that came to mind. So I would say the natural amphitheater.
Shelby, before we move on, can you add welcoming and preserve that wild, that wild feeling? Preserve wild feeling. I want to capture that thought that we had previously, too.
So before I go to round twos, because I got another hand up, we haven't heard from Councilmember Retrain.
Thanks, Mayor Mao Chow. Yeah, I like the passive use in the northern half, and the amphitheater idea is feasible, good idea. And if you're not doing the amphitheater, then a three-quarter sports field down in that lower section where it's pretty flat. And I like the idea, too, that Councilmember Lamb said about preserving that wild, natural character of this particular park. I don't know exactly what that means yet, but if you did something like that, then maybe wanted to, because this is also my concern, is the water, stormwater. And then, so what if you created a trout pond? So, you know, if there was a place where residents could come and fish, that might be also a solution to one of your problems. And my concern is definitely water.
Thank you. Hold that idea of the trout pond when we get to Big Rock South, too. That might come up again.
And then, and then the, I also have the concern always, though, I mean, tree retention, right? So I have a concern that, you know, we want to retain as many of the trees as we can. And so, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Howe.
I just, one last thing that I'd forgotten about, and Amy kind of reminded me when she said the wild place, and Karen also, when she was saying the welcoming place. I just think of where the wild things are. So there, I envision a play structure where the wild things are that is spectacular. And if you think about how welcoming the Bellevue Commons Park is, where they've got a fantastical play structure that you want to be a kid and crawl all over that thing and push the six-year-old off the slides and just take it for yourself. And then you can wander up and into a big grassy area where, in this case, there are dogs a lot of times. But you could take a walk, you could take a meander through a path, and it welcomes you into the rest of the city and the rest of Bellevue Square. And in a way, this, it could do something very similar, but with our own stamp because we're not Bellevue, we're Semamish. And so having something that's welcoming that gives a hint of the specialness, I think, of the place could very much be the identity for this park. Thank you.
Thank you. That octopus in the downtown Bellevue Park is harder to climb than you would think, at least as an adult. Not a ton of the concerns, which I'm thrilled with, but if there is a second round or any final thoughts before we move on to the vision?
I don't have any hands up, so.
Okay, so with our vision, we want to think in terms of phrases, right? Like not whole paragraphs, but those key terms, those single one-two words and phrases that really inspire you. If you could sum it all up in a word or two, what would it be? This one's supposed to go quick.
Councilmember Howe.
Pastoral.
Juliette, did you maybe want to give a couple examples of, like for Kohani, our most recent project, what our vision was? It was protect Queen Fog. It was a balance of passive and active, and then a gathering place for all, I believe.
Yep. So we had, you know, it was protection, gather, and balance. Like those would be like the key words that came out of it. And we craft the rest out of your hopes and dreams to kind of create those vision statements. So I liked the pastoral. I throw out wild, you know, if that's something that the various council members that mentioned that as their hopes and dreams, that's kind of a good, you know, those words sort of really evoke a feeling. That's what we're looking for here.
Councilmember Moran.
I'm going to go back to welcoming because I really see this as a welcoming spot to town center. So I'm going to go back to the word welcoming.
Councilmember Howe.
And somehow, to connect it to that welcoming idea is the connectedness. So we have to somehow string these jewels together in such a way that they are not so completely separate, that they don't see, that people don't see a pathway from A to B to C. So I'm not quite sure how to accomplish that, but, you know, maybe it's as if you had your own yellow brick road that could connect them all together and still have, they'd still have their own character. But a way to have them connected is important, I think.
Shelby, if we can add just the string of jewels. I just have as a really kind of, everyone gets a vision of their head of the string of jewels. And then the other thing I caught when we were talking about welcoming early then, unless there's some objections, that sense of a gateway, like the gateway to the town center, the welcoming, the gateway. It's more than just being welcomed when you're there, but it's being welcomed into something larger. Great. Are there any others?
I don't have any more lights on.
Okay, let's move on.
Makes it for the, Councilmember Howe has got her hand up again. Go ahead.
Just one more thing, just a surprise around the corner.
All right. Moving into Big Rock Park, same thing. Let's start with hopes, dreams, and concerns.
Deputy Mayor Clark.
Yeah, so I guess for either Big Rock or Beaton Hill, I know some inclusivity. So whether it's like, you know, someone who basically has limitations, so something that is like tangible, that you can like touch or feel as far as like a structure or something, and of course, access to that. And then I know, looking at the house, there's some really great structures. So I would definitely look to kind of the programming that we have in the city and different clubs, and so kind of looking for their input, which I know you guys will do. And I don't have a concern at this moment.
Councilmember Retrain.
Yeah, a passive educational park. And then I would, I would, you need a greenhouse for the stormwater stewards. That's definitely a hope. And it, pretty cool idea to have the Semamish Botanical Garden. The society definitely have a place to create. So the botanical garden.
So I would say I'd like to maintain as many of the trails as possible. I know we decommissioned some of them when we brought on parcel B, which is now Big Rock Central. I like having more options for walking, and it's, I mean, there's still plenty, obviously, but we did decommission some trails, so I'm hoping we can preserve as many of them as possible. Again, I think there are some opportunities potentially for a dog, a dog park here. And I think it would be nice to provide another one. We have one in the city, it's a very busy one. And unfortunately, we have a lot of off-leash dogs end up in Big Rock Park. And I will tell you that my dog does not appreciate that. He's always on leash, but I think Councilmember Howe knows, my dog doesn't like other dogs, so. Let's see, I would like to do something similar where we're recording stories from Mary Piggott. I mentioned this during our tour. There are stained glass windows that are present on the property. And I recall touring this property years ago with Mary Piggott, and her telling me that those stained glass windows came from somewhere. I don't remember where, but I would like to capture those. I think it's really important that we take our history and embrace it. So I would like to know where they came from. There are things like, there are fallen trees in there. I remember walking through there. She's got fallen trees that fell on the property that are now part of the trails there. I don't want to lose those. I don't want those to disappear when we go and do our thing with the trails. I think one of them might have even been made into a bridge. And as far as concerns, I don't want to lose anything in the park because we're trying to accommodate parking. I know that's not even possible, but I just want to be cognizant of giving people the ability to drive here that do not live in a walkable area. But I think this is nice because Southeast 20th provides sidewalk access on that north side of the street. But we might also want to consider the potential for people that are coming from the south side of the street. There are no crosswalks, there are no sidewalks on the south side of the street. And how do we accommodate those people safely if they wanted to walk? How are they going to get there? Do not want people jaywalking and getting hit. So that might be another thing in concern. Councilmember Lamb.
So I loved this property. As we were touring this, I kept on thinking how great it would be to have been Mary Piggott's child and, you know, grow up and have all of this, you know, this great space to explore. So to me, it felt a lot like camp. It felt like just a very like exploratory place. There's structures, there's ponds, there's the trails. So I agree with Councilmember Train that something educational here would be great, and the greenhouse would fall in align with that. My concern would be the house. I mean, it's a beautiful house, and I thought about, you know, I'm a little bit at a loss as to what that house could be because it is, you know, it has a lot of, it has, it's a very unique house, and it has old wood, and it would be kind of sad to see it kind of remodeled in any way. And I don't know, my other concern would be because this place just feels so magical that if, that once we start working on it, that we be mindful of the entire property. And how does that change the character of the entire property if we start tinkering? and how does that change the character of the entire property if we start tinkering with some of the buildings?
Thank you. Before we move on, Shelby, a chance to finish that note. Up on the hopes and dreams, can we add exploratory? And then under the maintain as many trails as possible, I'd like to add including trail features. I think that gets to Madam Mayor's comment about the, the things that are fallen around it that give it the same character. It's not just the trails, but it's the character of those trails, too.
Councilmember Howe?
Man, are we fortunate. We truly, truly fortunate. It's a remarkable property. What I am hopeful for is that we're able to use the structures to house, have residents hold meetings, have them do study sessions, have them, you know, used all the time. That's what I'm really hopeful for, is that we're able to use it for storage if we need it, but use it for meeting space, because I know we need that for the different organizations that populate the plateau. I'm optimistic that we could potentially use the house as a venue. ADA requirements will be problematic, but I'm also optimistic that with great creativity, we will not destroy the architectural integrity of the home in order to make a space that potentially we could turn into, clearly not a profit center, but actually something that could give us a bit of a return on that investment and be able to rent it out in the same way we do Beaver Lake Lodge. I would love to keep that coop. Man, that coop is awesome. And I, how bad would it be to have chickens? I don't know. Would it be bad? I'd love to see if we could do that. And on the concern side, it's cost. This is a great property. It's going to be expensive to maintain, I think, to certain, some extent, but I think we're doing the ADA require, things for the buildings, I think will be expensive. And so that's just a consideration that I've got right now.
Well, if you take care of the chickens that are in the chicken coop, then that's free, right?
Eggs, sell the eggs. Can we also add just accessibility of the, the house? I think that was the, the hopes and dreams is to use it, but the, the need to make it accessible without losing its character.
Councilmember Moran?
One of the things that I had looked at when I was there was, when I, I would love to see what we could do with the house. I'd love to see what we could do with all of the buildings for, access for the public, for groups, for teen groups, for small groups, for large groups. But the ADA is going to be a problem. The flooding down on the basement's going to be a problem. And that basement with the sub pump, I mean, it's, I don't know what you can do with that basement. I mean, it's, it's going to be a problem. But I don't want to lose that house. I don't want to lose any of those buildings. So one of the things that I had thought about was if it came down that we couldn't fix it ADA-wise, you know, could we use it for, you know, housing for, you know, have somebody living there, having, you know, having an employee live there for caretaker purposes and doing something that way? I mean, just, you know, I, I, I mean, I was just kind of trying to see, it would be good for the grounds, because somebody was there. It would, I was just trying to brainstorm of, you know, what we could do. So my first option would be, of course, to utilize it to the best interest, but rather than destroy it or leave it empty, I would rather see it, somebody there and there to take care of the grounds in some way. So anyway, that was just a thought, and I loved the trails out of there. I loved that property. When I got the tour, when Mary Piggott gave me that tour, and then, you know, she ended up showing me all of her quilting stuff, which was amazing, by the way. It was, I mean, she just, so lovingly, she, that whole property, it was just incredible. So I don't think there's, if we do anything to any of those buildings, I'm afraid we would lose a lot, and I don't want to do that. So I want to keep the feel of the property the best that we absolutely can. And I'm afraid the buildings, we're going to have to really analyze what we can do with those, you know, because I think the cost is going to be difficult. But then we, we look at what we could do to, you know, then we can brainstorm other ideas.
So I just, I, Juliette, I appreciate that you captured that thought on maintaining the trail features. And just to be like crystal clear, because I know I took pictures of that when I was walking those trails, which is, she literally had trees on the property that she incorporated into the trail. So I just wanted to be clear, it's not like some fallen tree. She was very strategic in her use of the trees and the trail. And I, I agree that the, the house itself is an amenity to the property, but my understanding is that while it was built in, what I believe I heard was 1923, that it is not, it can't be marked as historic because it's had too many alterations to it. And to that end, while I think that the wood is beautiful and that the house is really cool, I really am concerned about the operational maintenance of a house, especially one that floods. And I wonder if there aren't more viable options for the house itself, as in, could you lift it off its foundation and move it to a place that doesn't flood? So you can preserve the house, maybe it's not in the same spot, but that house could be a long-term problem and be very costly. So I, I do have concerns about the house itself. So I just wanted to note that.
Well, we'll be exploring a wide range of options and ideas for those structures. So we're trying to come at this with a very open mind and really just evaluate the potential and then the pros and cons of that potential. And it is something we're asking the public as well, just to get some of their, potentially their ideas. They might have some great ideas of, of how they might be used as well.
So I don't have any more hands up, so I think we can move over to the vision part.
All right. What's your vision for Big Rock Park South? And I guess part of this, too, is it, you know, I'm kind of assuming based on what I'm hearing, that it's different potentially than Beaton Hill, and maybe it's different from even Big Rock Central and North. So think about it a little in that context as well.
So I, I still think of this as, it's, you know, while it's three parcels, it, there's still continuity between the three. So I still see it as expansive of Big Rock, and I think of them, I don't think of them as Big Rock North and Big Rock Central, Big Rock South. It's all just Big Rock to me. They're all connected. You can walk from one to the next, to the next, so. Councilmember Howe?
And I see this as buzzing with activity, with different people coming in at different times, because somebody's got a meeting in one of the structures, for example, in all different age groups. So I don't see it just as a haven, say, for children, for example. I see it as, as a meeting spot for residents of all ages, basically, coming in and take, making use of the, of the park and then exiting and going off and doing the, the rest, going on with the rest of their day while the new person comes in. So I see an exchange of people coming in and out in a flow.
There's something for everyone here, and, and I do think it also provides the ability for residents all the way from Southeast 20th to be able to traverse all the way, essentially, if we could get some type of sidewalk up to 18th, all the way up onto Southeast 4th. So at the very least, they can get to Southeast 8.
Shelby, can we add traverse and flow? Those are both really good words to use as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Moran?
I kind of think that this, the way that this property is laid out is that this property has always, the main house is here, and so it has always functioned as the main house and everything's flowed out of it. And so I kind of look at the property that way, as that main front of the areas is kind of the magnet to that area, and everything kind of flows from it. And so I guess that's how I look at that, that front, that front end, is I kind of look at it as, as kind of home base, so to speak, and everything comes from home base. So I look at every, everything for all ages coming from home base and going out toward the park, whether through the trails, through the, however you want to do it. That's how I see it.
I like the starting point that Shelby put down. I think that really kind of gets to that idea.
Okay, I don't have any more hands up.
I do see another hand.
Oh, there we go. Councilmember Lamb?
Can we keep the word educational in there?
Thank you.
And I think parks should be fun. I mean, this should be a fun place.
Of course, that gets the exclamation point. If we could put smiley faces, we probably would, that would, that's what I'd put. And I am not seeing any more hands either, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So do you, you have everything you need for us?
Yep, this is, this is great. This is just what we were hoping for, and I think you guys did awesome on the vision part. That's a struggle sometimes, so I really appreciate the kind of more creative side of the discussion for those vision statements. If we want to go back to the presentation, we have just a couple of things to wrap up with, and I think Shelby, you were going to close us out.
Yes, thank you, Juliette. So next step for the hopes, dreams, and concerns, we will be issuing a community survey this week, and that will go through mid-May. And then we have a few events coming up this weekend that we're really excited about. First is an informational booth at the Earth Day event at Beaver Lake Lodge, and then an open house at Big Rock Park South this Saturday at 3:00 PM. And then next Thursday, we'll be doing a virtual public workshop and returning in the summer with some design alternatives. We'll be attending a few community events, and then we'll return to you and the Parks Commission on September 13th for your input on our design alternative. And that's it.
Great, thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Council, our next item is the city manager recruitment process. Looks like I'm turning this over to Mike Sugg.
Good evening, and thank you for your patience while I transferred over to panelists. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, and Mr. Acting City Manager. My name is Mike Sugg, Senior Management Analyst for the City Managers Office. And during the council meeting last week, you will recall approving a motion directing the addition of a request for proposals, otherwise known as an RFP, to tonight's agenda. Staff clarified after the meeting with the maker of the motion that their intent was for the RFP to be on the topic of recruitment for a permanent city manager. And so council has not yet had an opportunity to discuss as a group how you would like the recruitment to take place. So first and foremost, this agenda item is really providing time for council to have that discussion. If, as a result of the discussion, council, council determines that the city should engage an executive search firm to complete the recruitment, staff can draft an RFP for council's consideration at an upcoming meeting, and we would appreciate any input on what you would want to see in that RFP, so we can incorporate that into the draft. Tonight's agenda bill includes some background information based on the city manager recruitment that the city undertook in 2018 through 2019, during which time the city engaged an executive search firm. The RFP that was used to find that search firm is linked in the agenda bill, and it includes a number of requirements that firms had to respond to as part of the proposal, such as a description of the methodology, a proposed fee, and qualifications, among some other requirements. I'll touch quickly on the other two points in the agenda bill, the first being the cost. Staff estimate that the fee for an executive search firm to perform the recruitment would be in the range of $25,000 to $50,000. And this is really based on six proposals that the city received in 2018, which averaged $25,000, so factoring in some inflation since then, would get us in that $25,000 to $50,000 range as an estimate. The second is regarding how long it will take to perform the recruitment. As an example, the 2018 through 2019 recruitment took about seven months, and that was from the point that the RFP was released, all the way through the council selection of the city manager. And then from that point, the selected city manager needed an additional two months before starting, because they had to provide notice to their current employer, and they needed to relocate their family from out of state. So that whole process took us about nine months total before the city manager was in their office actually working for us. And I will go ahead and stop talking now and allow the council to discuss their preferred approach to the recruitment, and any feedback you might have on a draft RFP to bring on a search firm, if that is the direction that is chosen. And with that, I'll hand it back to the mayor.
Thanks, Mike. Council? Councilmember Howe?
I would be in support of hiring a search firm to do a, to do certainly a national search, but with emphasis for regional, if at all possible, just to make the process maybe a little faster. In terms of the qualifications, I don't know that I could actually speak to that, but there would be some requests that I would personally be interested in, which would be those that have more, well, have extensive, well, let me put this, have had diversity training. And know, and know how to implement that, or know how to implement that across, across the staff, those that have, that would be one of my criteria. And I think another part that I'd be looking for, and I don't know how you would write this up, is if there was a way to measure productivity and effectiveness in, in, in efficient city government, in an efficient process with council, efficient process with staff, so that we felt like we were moving forward and getting work done that we know that we need to get done. So if there was a way to manage that or monitor that, that would be tremendous.
Deputy Mayor Clark?
Yeah, so just looking at the 2018 RFP, I think that looks like a really good start, you know, with any additional additions that councilmember Howe just mentioned as well. But yeah, I think that's a great start, and as you said, with the timeline, I think sooner is better than later. So thank you for putting that together.
Councilmember Moran?
I'm just going to make a motion here. I'd like to make a motion that we put something, put out an RFP for, put out an RFP similar to what was done in 2018, with the price of going up as per what Mike has listed here because of, well, the change of economy. And we get it done ASAP, so that we can try to get our recruitment going. But I would say we open it up for the RFP for company search firms, get it out within, you know, as soon as we can get it out, and I need to know from Mike when that is, and then we can talk about, go from, with Mike's recommendation on how long it should be set up for.
So Councilmember Moran, I know we don't have a second yet, but I'm trying to, you said per what Mike has here on the price. Is that the $25,000 to $50,000 in the agenda? Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure that was clarified.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Moran, did you want to speak to your motion?
I think we need to get going on this, a lot of this. Once we get a recruitment group in here, once we've picked one, then we can start, you know, honing in a little bit more on what we're really looking for. But we really, we need to get the RFP out there. That's the main thing, just to start with. So we need to get going.
Okay, any other comments? Mike? Nope, nope.
Sorry, I just put my hand down. I just wanted to clarify, so with this motion, we would not be coming back to council with an updated draft RFP. We would just be moving forward with putting out an RFP similar to what we did in 2018 without further council review of the RFP that's going out. Is that the understanding there?
Yes, that is, that is what my motion is, is that it be similar to what was done in 2018, under the, under the cost of $25,000 to $50,000, as per which we have written here.
Thank you for the clarification.
Councilmember Lamb? Councilmember Lamb?
So the 2018 recruitment process took approximately seven months. If it takes longer, or is this going to just stay open until the position is filled? Is that pretty much what we're thinking?
So I think the, there's sort of two separate parts here. The first is we need to recruit for the search firm to perform the recruitment of the city manager. So I would anticipate that that, you know, will take anywhere from, you know, a month and a half to two months before we actually have a contract in front of council that's approved. From that point, it's really dependent on the quality of candidates that we get in. For example, if we don't get a great pool of candidates in the first time we go out to recruit, we may have to go out for a second round. That could add additional time. So it, it really depends. That last round that we did in 2018 through 2019, we went with the first pool of candidates that came in. So we didn't have to go back out and do that second, second part of the search. So it's really hard to provide a definitive timeline because there are numerous factors that would go into the experience of that.
So I guess the, the motion has some conflict, however, with the RFP proposal requirements, which is the pricing. It says, "Provide information on your firm's proposed fee schedule." It could be that the fees go beyond $50,000, and I don't want to cut ourselves off at the knees or lose any time because someone's pricing doesn't fit in there. So I would offer an amendment that removes the language around the $25,000 to $50,000, just so that we're, we know what we're looking at here. And then we can make decisions with all of the information in front of us.
No, that makes sense.
Okay, the amendment's been seconded. Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six zero, the amendment is adopted. Back to the main motion as amended, which is basically to use the RFP from 2018 and have it open as soon as possible. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Lamb, you already turned up.
Oh, I also noticed that early, earlier, we had, Councilmember Howe had come up with a diversity statement to encourage minority-owned businesses to, to apply for these positions. And I noted that it wasn't in the 2018 RFP, so it'd be great to put it into this one.
Can you frame that into an amendment?
The RFP to recruit a search firm, the RFP contains diverse, the diversity statement encouraging women and minority-owned businesses to apply.
Second. Okay, amendment's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six zero, amendment passes. So now we are voting on the main motion as amended twice, which is that we are putting out an RFP similar to 2018. We'll open it up as soon as possible. Not restricting ourselves on price and adding in encouraging minority women-owned businesses to apply. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six zero, aye is have it. And hopefully that's all you need, Mike.
I think that's enough to get us started. So we'll get that RFP updated with the couple amendments that were proposed here tonight, and probably with the goal of trying to get it out and posted early next week. Contact some potential recruitment firms to let them know that it's live, and just keep moving forward, and we'll update the council as we go.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Council, we have about 10 minutes left, and we have city council reports. Anyone with a council report? Deputy Mayor Clark?
Yeah, so I don't have anything in writing because it was more recent. So on Sunday, I just raised my hand again. On Sunday, Councilmember Lamb and Howe and I met with King County Councilmember Sarah Perry and to discuss the council vacancy and next steps and processes. And then I know we got an update from King County today. And I sent an email to everyone because she encouraged, you know, anyone who would like to, to reach out. And I subsequently emailed the remainder of the council to schedule up meetings or calls if they are able. And so far, only one has responded, which is Councilmember Balducci. And last, I just wanted to say, I think last week or the week before, I talked about the appointment to the SCA Equity and Inclusion Cabinet, and I was appointed. So I just wanted to share that. So thank you.
That's great. Anyone else with a council report? Okay, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a discussion point I wanted to raise with council. I know when we discussed the building reopening a month or so ago, one of the conversations that we started having was whether or not council was going to open up to the public. And at the time, the decision was made to delay that opening for the council meetings. And so as we moved about a month ahead of that, I think it's an appropriate time for council to have another discussion about whether or not they want to open up council meetings to the public moving forward, regardless of whether or not the governor has lifted the emergency order. So I just wanted to tee this up for you to have that conversation. And then I'm looking for some council direction on what, if anything, council would like to do moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I appreciate you bringing this up since I had asked that we might discuss this as council. I think it would be nice to allow the public back into City Hall. I think most jurisdictions and agencies are back in person. So it would be nice to provide our public an opportunity to reengage. It doesn't disable their ability to participate remotely should they so choose. And I know that's more convenient for some people, and it's nice to be able to have that option as well. But I would like to see the public invited back into City Hall sooner than later. Councilmember Moran?
Well, I had three questions. One, I didn't get my hand up fast enough to, for my report for council, but for this topic. What is the opinion for, for staff on this as far as having, you know, do we have anybody that is, any of the staff or anything that is going to be at these meetings that has any issues that we need to be alerted to health-wise? And then the second question is, is I know Redmond does this. I don't know what his quid does. I didn't ask yet. But I don't want to end up in a situation where, and I saw this last week at a meeting I was at, where we had a lot of people show up at a meeting. And I was very uncomfortable. So is there some way that we can have some sort of controls on that?
Mr. City Manager, is there, is there a mechanism for us to limit maybe how many individuals can be within chambers? Maybe opening up the back windows and allowing people back there, or I'm not sure what state law would provide for anyway?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In response to Councilmember Moran's questions, I'll take the first one first. And that is, for staff, as you all will note, we are encouraging those that would like to feel more comfortable, continue to wear a mask to do so. So we have a variety of folks in the building at different times. Some have masks on, some do not. And I think we would encourage the public, if we do open up, to do the same. I think one of the things that we could do for the room itself is to socially distance the chairs. And when the chairs are full, then we can potentially open up the back. We are also, you know, at the dais here, we have our, our screens up between individual council members and the staff so that we're trying to be as safe as possible within the construct that we have. If we reach a point where we have so many people that we're turning people away, well, I think that would be a fantastic problem to have. And if we get to that point for some issue, then we can take a look at it, leading up to that, if we think there's going to be a huge crowd, and, and take some measures. We also have the ability to pipe the sound out into the lobby. And so if we needed to, we could do external, we could have people sitting externally if necessary so that they could watch and participate, but not be in the room at the same time. So I would also note for council, just to be really clear, we are, if and when we do open up, we will be permanently hybrid. So that means that staff and public can, can continue to participate remotely, even if the building and the room is open to the public. We will, we will have that opportunity for those to continue to participate from their respective places, whether it's residence or otherwise, to make sure that we are providing maximum flexibility. We have the, the capability all set up and ready to go. So this is really a question for council about how you'd like to proceed.
Council, we have about three minutes left before we need to extend our meeting, just to be mindful. Councilmember Moran, did you have another comment or hands still up?
I still had another question, and I'll just put into print, I'll just type out my report. But so our council rules don't allow for hybrid for council. Is that correct?
That is my understanding, and of course, the council rules can be amended.
So can I ask that you bring something to us next week for that to be corrected, for there to be an addition to our council rules that I would allow for that?
Certainly, if that's the will of the majority of the council, I need to gauge if a majority supports that direction.
I support.
So Council, if, if we can, I think maybe if we silo these topics here so that we can get some consensus first on the public, and then we can circle back on the council rules. I think, given the time constraints here with two minutes left, if we can get a motion to extend, maybe just 15 minutes, that might help.
Motion to extend for 15 minutes?
Second. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of extending until 10:15, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six zero, we'll extend to 10:15. Okay. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I did just want to note that normally, we wouldn't have a meeting next week, and it's a work session. So I would say if council does want to do something specific, whether it's reopening and/or potentially taking a look at council rules, that we would roll that over to the next business meeting, which would be the May 3 meeting. So just for operational sake.
Great. So if we can help give our acting city manager some guidelines for inviting the public back in, I'll throw my two cents in that I'd like to see them invited back into council chambers. And I, I think the city manager had some great suggestions with spacing chairs, and when it's full, they go to the hallway. I don't think we're going to have that big of a draw, frankly, that it would be a problem. I mean, sure, there's always times when we tackle subject matter that brings people in, but I think people are conscientious too about the fact that we are not out of a pandemic quite yet. And so I think because we're providing that ability for that hybrid, I think most people will, if they are uncomfortable, will choose to just stay home and give their public comment that way. So I would say that May 3 meeting would be a, a great one to have the, the city back, the, the public back in, in council chambers. So I don't know what the flavor of the rest of the council is, but that's my personal thoughts. I see at least the deputy mayor nodding. And Councilmember Lamb, she's also got her hand up. Councilmember Howe's got her thumb up. Councilmember Train. Okay, so May 3. We'll have the public invited back into council chambers. So that'll be great. Okay, now, oh, sorry, Mr. City Manager, do you have something else?
Just really quick, Madam Mayor, I just want to follow up on that and, and note that once the council opens up for public meetings, that means we are also opening up the rest of our boards and commission meetings moving forward. So just to note that.
Okay. And I think if, if we can use communications to message out the fact that the public doesn't have to come here, they can still stay home. You know, I won't want to be, you know, recognize that they don't have to be here to give public comment. They still have that ability. Okay, so then back to the other issue that our council rules currently do not provide for absences. I do want to note, we've kind of had this unwritten rule, and it hasn't been relative to the pandemic. It's more, more relative to someone's traveling, and they're out of town, but they still want to participate in the council meeting. And they've, we've just kind of done that as an unwritten rule. The pandemic has obviously changed things quite a bit. But so I would certainly be supportive of altering the rules for, on occasion, if someone is sick and still wanted to participate but didn't want to come to City Hall sick, I think that is a, is a perfectly reasonable reason. Or if a council member is traveling and wanted to participate, I think that's also. But I, I don't think that just staying home for the sake of staying home provides the sanctity that we want for executive sessions and interacting with our general public now that we're inviting them back into council chambers. So that's, those are my thoughts relative to changes we might provide to our council rules. Councilmember Train?
So first, can I, Scott, if you would please communicate out to our boards and commissions to the, the change. That would, that'd be much appreciated by our boards and commissions. And then I want to just concur with the mayor there. I, I think you're absolutely right on the rule change, and would agree with you on that.
Okay, so maybe something can be drafted that provides council the ability to be remote for meetings when they are ill or on vacation?
So I do understand that, Mayor Malchow. I just think it'd be great if the council wouldn't mind framing that as a motion so I could get direction. And then with regard to scope, there are also some recent updates to the OPMA that we should probably fold into that amendment to the council rules as well. So I can bring some proposed language at the May 3 meeting for council consideration.
Great. So I'll go ahead and make that motion then. I would move that we direct the acting city manager to provide some potential amendments to our council rules and procedures relative to council members participating remotely for illness or vacation, and any additional OPMA issues that we might need to embed into our rules and procedures.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Councilmember Moran?
Well, I'd like to also see work added into that. So if you're out of town for work, you should be excused, be able to use that. And, you know, I, I'm, I'm sure we're forgetting something that, you know, that would be an allowable absence. But one of the things that we added for EFNR is just to, just to make sure that it wasn't abused, and people didn't just stay at home for the sake of staying home, is if they did have a medical or something on it, was that you couldn't miss three in a row unless you, you know, unless you had a medical excuse or you had a, you were out of town for work and you could show, or you had, I mean, it was basically, we were trying to make sure it wasn't abused.
Do you want to frame the other portion into an amendment relative to work?
A friendly amendment of adding work as one of the additions to your motion.
Second. Okay, any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor? Oh, Councilmember Howe?
I'm a little worried about that. It's to, it's to make it so that, it's to hold our feet to the fire to a certain extent to be here. So, I mean, I'm sure we already have a rule about you can't miss X number of meetings, right?
There's a state law.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Oh, boy. Like, can you have this job if you're a traveling salesperson? No, I don't think you can. So I don't know how to word this to protect us into such a way that the, your intent is to be here. This is your first priority, is to be here. There will be a time when There will be a time when, if it's, if it's occasional work, maybe if it could just be amended to be, if I could make a friendly amendment to have it be occasional work.
Yeah, I was just throwing it out there.
Can I move that I could add a friendly?
So there are no friendly amendments, just amendments.
I'm being nice about it, so I think it is kind of friendly. I'd like to amend, or I'd like to move to amend that this, that we add language that incorporates occasional work-related absences that don't, you know, go into multiples. That's, forget that. Occasional, I know, that's the problem.
I'll just remind the council too that, you know, as a council, you get to decide whether to excuse an absence or not, right? And so it's something that you can
Once a quarter.
Vote on each time.
Once a quarter.
Well, I think, okay, so first, we don't have a second on this, but, but what I think our city attorney is saying is that
We can fix it.
You don't have to be here every meeting, so if you had work, I don't think we've ever had an issue where work has been an issue, but you could miss a meeting for work, so. Okay, so we don't have a second. Councilmember Lamb, you have your hand up?
Can we change the language to that you're only allowed perhaps, you know, three in a year of remote? Would that cover an occasional illness of work? Like, there could be so many potential issues where somebody may need to be at home for whatever reason, a death in the family, like, there could be anything, somebody's having surgery.
I don't think that's enough.
I think, I think maybe what we do is, is you vote down the amendment and then circle back on a secondary amendment. So the amendment I heard was to add work.
Add work.
So, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Really quickly, if I may suggest, I think we're getting a little wrapped up in trying to be, solve everything right now, and if I may suggest, if the council's okay with this, we can take, once you've finished voting on your items, we can take what we've gotten so far, go back, do a redraft, come to the May 3 meeting, prepare to potentially tweak if you need to, and that we will look to finalize at the second meeting in May, if that works as a process.
Thank you, yeah, I appreciate that. I think we're trying to do this on the dais right now, and this is more study session than, but, anyway, okay, so we do have a, an amendment on the floor, we do need to vote on it, so this is to add work. So all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay? Okay, by a vote of four to, we'll add work. Okay. So do you feel like you have what you need to at least bring us something to consider and maybe further nuance later?
I do, Mayor and council, thank you.
Thank you. One other item that I wanted to bring up relative to our council rules that we might want to consider, and it's ironic because I'd already written it down when Ms. Victor gave public comment and had a nice background, I know she's done it, she certainly does it in a very, very tactful way, but I do know in my conversations that other jurisdictions have had a big problem with this, and I think we may be inviting ourselves to have a problem with this, where people are putting backgrounds up that are not appropriate. And so I think we need to have some provision, I don't know if it falls in council rules or somewhere else, that we cannot, I don't think we should be allowing the public to have a background that is something other than blurred wherever they are, but other jurisdictions have had to curb this. So I don't know if there is the ability to, I don't know where that goes, how we manage that, I don't know if we can manage it, but other jurisdictions have had to stop webcams because of inappropriate content.
Madam Mayor, if I could just interrupt real quick, I don't believe you voted on the primary motion.
Ah, thank you, we only got to the amendments. Appreciate that. Okay. We'll circle back on the, this, these are the amendments based on council rules, so we're voting on them as amended several times.
Aye.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six zero, that's passed, thank you. Got ahead of ourselves here. I got ahead of myself. So, Madam City Attorney, do you know where we would or how we would do anything? I don't even know if the council wants to entertain it, I just know Redmond's had a problem, I believe other nearby jurisdictions have had issues during public comment, and not that it's been a problem for us yet, but...
Mayor, I'm happy to research that, and I can provide an email follow-up to the council, and go from there.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have four minutes, and we are probably going to need to extend again because we still have a closed session. Do we know how much time we need for that?
I would guess 15 minutes.
Okay, all right, so need a motion to extend to 10:30?
I move we extend the meeting until 10:30.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six zero, we will extend till 10:30. Council is now going into closed session. This is review of professional negotiations while in progress pursuant to RCW 42.30.144B. All right, 10:27. Council, I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion to have our city attorney finalize and bring back on May 3 a contract to secure our city manager, for our acting city manager.
Interim.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Moran, did you want to speak to your motion?
No, I think it speaks for itself, I'm very excited to make the motion.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six zero, we will bring that back. Council, I'd entertain a second motion. Deputy Mayor Clark?
I move to extend Scott's acting city manager role for two more weeks until the three May at the same pay rate.
Seconded. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six zero, that is extended. I'd certainly entertain a final motion for the evening.
Motion to dismiss. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six zero, we are adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Yeah, good job.